Good evening and welcome to our Eastline Board of Select meeting for November 2nd, 2022. All those who can, please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do not have any additional agenda or consent item, consent calendar items. Any delegation, anyone wish to address the board? Most of you will be talking to us shortly anyway on some topic or another, so. Moving on, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the October 19th.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 19, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann, any comments, corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
General abstain.
And Mr. Weber abstains. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2022, in the amount of $3,204.07.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just, I'm sure people watching, we never ask for comments on the consent calendar because that means, it's a consent calendar, means we all agree to it. And if somebody, if there was something on there that someone wanted to discuss further at the beginning of the meeting, we would remove that and make it an agenda item. So that's why we don't ask for comments on the consent calendar. Moving on. We have this for new business, we have special appropriation for the LEARN fund. First we have is the Eastline Middle School water heater. Chris Lund, we'll be, Facilities Director for the schools, will walk us through this.
Good evening. So, the water heater at the middle school, which lies in the basement with the boiler, sprung a leak in March, basically. And it was a very slow drip, but at that time, you know, we don't want to leave anything unchecked. We brought our contractor in, our mechanical contractor in, who in turn called the manufacturer's rep for the tank itself, who came in. And based on his experiences with that, that unit, and in general, he told us we had maybe from six to 18 months to extend that through to the end of its life before it really failed. We were already past the time of budget season to get something in the current fiscal year budget. So we have been nursing it along as it's slowly leaking more and more. So I was over there today and we have a bucket underneath which we've plumbed into a floor drain just so we can keep it from going all over the floor. And over time, it's got progressively greater volume. We estimate now that we're somewhere five to six, maybe seven gallons per hour that's leaking. So it is a steady stream now, so there's obviously further deterioration in the tank itself. So it's not a tank that can be taken apart and repaired. So we do need to replace it in that way. It is very similar to the your home water heater, which you take it out and you replace it. It just degrades over time, the tank inside. So we have come forth with a request to use LEARN funds. The estimated cost using our HVAC contractor to do the work is eighty-four thousand, eighty-four dollars. I've broken that down a little further earlier today. The unit itself and the associated plumbing, that's the biggest expense of this whole endeavor. That's seventy-six thousand dollars alone, just for the materials. The rigging and labor to get the old one out and put the new one in is only seventy-eight hundred and change. So it is really driven by the cost of that unit. It's basically a one-on-one replacement for what's there, except that we have the 20-year more modern version that's going in, but size, dimensions, capacity, everything else is similar to what is already in place. One other item I'll mention, just for everybody's knowledge, the middle school is one of our shelter, or is our shelter location in town. So this unit is bigger than what we would normally have for just a school to support the shelter location. So we are, and we did check in with Demis and Chief Engelstein, tried to find some money. And I know other folks have looked around and unfortunately, there were no other grants or other funding available. So we're using our internal LEARN funds for that, with your permission.
And it is not just a local shelter, it's a regional shelter as well for the area too. Any questions for Chris regarding the hot water heater?
Yeah, I think what I heard you say in between there was that their current hot water heater is 20 years old?
Yes, it's original to building construction.
Okay, and yeah, that's, and is this the single quote, or did you get multiple quotes?
This is through our vendor that we use for our mechanical service contract. The price that we quoted based on a couple of other informal quotes that we received, verbal quotes, was lower than what we would have gotten elsewhere.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yes, I'm sorry I was a couple of minutes late, my apologies. I couldn't find my car keys. Hard to get here without those. So this money is coming out of your rental fees from renting to outside organizations and things?
Yeah, from, from LEARN's original, yeah, LEARN's original usage of that north wing of Lily Bay Haines. Yeah, there's still money left in that account.
And I'm just curious as to why this wasn't done under the rehab project for the middle school, which is pretty extensive?
Rehab for the middle school? Oh, we did not have a rehab project for the middle school. It was the elementary schools. Just the three elementary.
Just three, okay.
So it's just original to the building. Right.
Okay, and I noticed that you're using your regular contractor, MCOR.
Yes.
And does that contract require that all maintenance services be done through them?
They do maintain our equipment, yes.
Because the town generally has a three-bid requirement for replacement of materials of projects?
That's correct. And we did go out to some other vendors, as I just mentioned, for quotes at the time and got informal quotes, which were significantly higher. I think we were saving quite a bit in the labor side of things because the component would have been the same pretty much from any other vendors.
And what would be the expected lifespan on this unit?
Mechanical equipment of this type is typically 15 to 20 years.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions, or, Ann?
Yeah, just for service, it needs, you know, annual service, is that included in the price? Or do you pay for that separately, or how does that work?
We have, we have a comprehensive separate maintenance contract for all the buildings. So, and that covers everything from water heaters to boilers to the HVAC equipment.
And MCOR is the vendor that does all this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ann?
Just a couple of questions. One about the proposal from May 23rd, which is, which contains the price of eighty-four thousand, eighty-four. So is that okay now as months have passed and inflation has, you know?
They have held the price.
Okay, they've held, held that for you, okay. And then my other question was just, in the LEARN account, I guess the total in there remaining is one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, two oh nine, and then we're taking out this eighty-four thousand and change. So I'm, I was trying to remember back, and I quite honestly didn't have the time to go back into meeting minutes, but the LEARN account was there's, you know, it was great, we were able to, you know, keep that going. And, but I was just trying to remember if it was purpose in a certain way, you know, and if that's going to cause an issue with some other project or other thing. I was just, I had it in the back of my head, but quite honestly, I couldn't put my finger on it.
Yeah, no, I think mainly this was purpose for specific projects, different things. Vehicle purchase once with it as well, years back, so.
So just kind of similar to other items in the C N R E, you know, that we, you know, we've, we have it, it can be used for this or something else, but it wasn't earmarked for like the pool or something like that?
No, no. Yeah, that pool is a separate.
Yes, yes, that has a separate one, okay. I just wanted to.
And I do have one other question. I assume that much of this money was stockpiled from when the Chinese school was there?
No, LEARN itself, the rest, LEARN, they, they rented out the space. So there was children in, in that, that north wing, and they had left years back.
Thank you.
Ann, any questions?
Yeah, just one. In, in MCOR's letter, quote, "It excludes hazardous work and material asbestos removal." Can I assume correctly that because it's 20 years old, that there probably isn't any asbestos in that tank?
Yeah, it was certified asbestos-free when it was installed.
It was after the, okay, thank you.
I think your profession makes sure those are all in these documents there, so. Any other comments or questions? Think we're ready for a motion?
Okay. Move to approve the expenditure of eighty-four thousand, eighty-four dollars from account thirty-two dash ninety-nine dash zero-nine four dash nine hundred dash zero-two, parentheses, LEARN rental fees, for the purchase and installation on a new hot water heater for the Eastline Middle School, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. Okay, moving on, Chris, you're still there. Now we're talking about the Eastline Public Schools pickup and plow truck.
Right, so this request is to replace one of the plow trucks that we have. The truck in question is dated from 2006. It's a Chevy 3500 truck that was originally owned by Parks and Rec, which was transferred to the Board of Ed in 2019. At the time of its transfer, the head mechanic told us to expect three to four more years of life out of it. We've taken it back and kept up with the maintenance that we've had. That's regular maintenance during that time. At its more recent check with the new mechan, head mechanic, he found enough damage, enough corrosion, enough just wear and tear, that he basically red-tagged it, told us we couldn't use it for plowing purposes, could not use it for towing purposes. And the only real purpose that we could use it for would be to travel back and forth between the schools on local roads, not on the highway. So we are looking to replace this vehicle. There's a quote in there for a replacement truck. This particular vehicle has a lift gate and also is one of the primary pickup trucks that we use for plowing lots, so hence the quotes included in there for those two option items. And I'd be willing to entertain any questions there are.
I'm just surprised you found a vehicle, doesn't it?
The, the concern I have, quite honestly with this, is that by the time we were getting quotes, and this is the statewide contract quotes.
Yes.
What may have been on the lot at that time may not be there now.
Okay.
So basically, the owner said, when you have approval and you're ready to make a purchase, call us and we'll tell you what we have available. So my anticipation is it'll take us a while to actually get the vehicle on site after we actually make the procurement. And we may miss part of the plow season. We have a second vehicle, unfortunately, that was just red-tagged as well. So I've been working with a fleet management rental agency out of North Haven to ensure that we have rental truck, plow truck support. Our folks will be using during the winter season because I don't anticipate that we will likely get the new truck very quickly, unless I'm wrong. And there's one thing on a lot somewhere, which is possible, so.
Once you actually have that purchase ordered ahead, it makes it a lot easier too.
Right, yeah.
Okay, any, any questions for?
Yes, how does this compare with the vehicles that the town are using, the similar smaller vehicles?
We try to match the town purchases now. So the pickups are all about the same model, I believe, Ford or Chevy. I think they're leaning more towards Fords now with their purchases. We've tried to follow that because we want to ensure that the mechanics at the garage can maintain our vehicles as well. So we follow in step with what the town's been doing.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have one, yeah. What's going to happen to the 2006 Chevy pickup that you're using now? I mean, I mean, what?
It'll come back to the town, we'll auction, somebody will buy it for parts or something like that. So that, that's what it'll do. It'll go back to our fleet and then Justin will request permission to, to sell it.
Because I, yeah, I don't see that you're using it as trade-in or anything like that, right? Yeah, I forget that, it sounds like, from the, from your description of its current state.
Scrap metal's going pretty high right now.
Thank you for the documentation you provided in the separate handout because I didn't really have clue about this, but I studied my diagrams.
Okay, after, any other questions, Ann?
Yes, sure. Move to approve the expenditure of fifty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and forty-six cents from account thirty-two dash ninety-nine dash zero-nine four dash nine hundred dash zero-zero-two, parentheses, LEARN rental fees, for the purchase of a 2022 F-350 Supercab four-wheel-drive pickup truck with a Tommygate lift gate and a Boss V snowplow attachment, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. Thank you for coming tonight, thank you for the documentation, as well Chris and Jeff. Moving on, we have now a release of easement by Deerfield Village. And Gary, I'll let you explain this, this has to do with, well, I'll let you explain, Gary, because.
Sure. Good evening. Connecticut DOT has requested that the town subordinate an existing conservation easement at Deerfield Village, and that's associated with the I-95 interchange and exit 74 improvements at Route 161 and the replacement of bridge number zero-zero-two-five-zero, otherwise known as project number forty-four dash one fifty-six. So as the state's proposing to widen I-95 and improve the bridge abutments, in order to access that area, they would like us to subordinate the conservation easement, which would provide them access to the area, it's on the east side of the bridge. There's an existing vehicular trail, I guess, that heads up that way. Unfortunately, it terminates at the end of the property line that the state owns. And the next property over is Deerfield Village, and you have a conservation easement, so they can't actually access the area under the bridge without coming in from the west. So I think overall, after analyzing this with the town engineer, there's no other impact to the conservation easement otherwise. I think this would provide the state the ability to maintain that area, the rock wears in the future. So long-term environmentally, that would be an ideal situation where they have the ability to go in there and maintain their, their structures, as well as the, the access that's already there. They wouldn't have to provide or create new access going through wetlands or the stream on, on the other side of the, the bridge. So I don't foresee any adverse impact to the town or the easement in that regard. I believe Attorney O'Connell did draft a, a motion for you. If you have any questions, I did provide you hard copies of the plans. I know they're reduced, so they may be difficult to see. I have a full-size copy here, if need be. Grab the easel.
Gary, I was trying to get a sense of the size of it as compared to the entire easement, you know?
So sheet, we see number fourteen point two-two, probably the best example. Shows the east side of the highway. Deerfield Village is back here to the, to the, they have this trail on, on the map that ends right at this line. And what they want to do is make this little Y-shaped, what would be a paved apron, or it's not paved, it's just a paved, improved with stone. That would be their access so they can get to the back of this bridge area where all the proposed ramp and wears are located. Otherwise, you're coming in from the other side, and then you have to go through the, the stream under the bridge to actually access it. So this obviously make the whole project significantly easier, less environmental impact.
Does this impact the commuter parking lot that's there on the ridge?
Part of the, the proposal for the I-95 improvements do. It eliminates that lot and it proposes to relocate it south of I-95, right where, approximately where the.
Exit ramp is now.
Exit ramp is now. It'll be located more perpendicular, parallel, sorry, with 161, based on the current plan.
I drove up there today to look at it, but I couldn't quite put things together.
And the.
I couldn't find, I couldn't find my keys tonight, I couldn't find my magnifying glass either this afternoon to try to read it. So I drove up there to look at it. And so this really doesn't provide any increased thoroughfare beyond Deerfield Village?
Correct, no, there'll be no traffic going through Deerfield Village. This will be only strictly for the state to maintain the rock wears in that area under the bridge. There's no other purpose for it, and it's a small area. They identified approximately eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five square feet of easement that would be subordinated. So it's not a complete release of easement, we're not releasing the easement, we're just subordinating it. All that would mean is the state would have the right to come in, maintain it, without upsetting the conservation easement.
The type of rock that they're putting in there is, I guess, say a retainer. Is that attractive? You know, sometimes when they've done projects, we've got an ugly trap rock put in.
I can't say that it's going to be attractive or have a finished look. I believe it's going to be natural stone. So it's typically going to probably be a little larger, three-to-four-foot-sized boulders. You'll have that, and then down to the riprap-sized, kind of what you see across the street from Stop &amp; Shop. So I think somewhere in that area. So you're going to have a variety of rocks as it goes downstream. As closer to the outlet side of the bridge, you're going to have larger rock just to reduce erosion because you have, you increase the flows as it goes through the bridge because it's a concrete structure. So we just speed it up, so they're going to want larger rock on the outlet side for, for armament. Can't say it's going to be attractive. The good news is it won't be as visible from the highway or any of the side streets, or even from Deerfield Village, because it's virtually not visible now with the existing vegetation. You might pick it up as you travel Route 1 and you look down. I can tell you, I can't really see it from the highway or from Route 1 without getting out of the car at the fishing ladder, fish ladder, sorry. So, and I actually have to walk down the stream to, to view that side of the highway. So I don't know that we'll actually see it.
Other questions?
But you said it was a temporary release of the easement? And then when they're done with the construction, they'll put it back to the way it is? Or it's going to be, the road's going to consume that area?
It's a subordination of the easement, so they'll maintain that access and it'll just be a gravel access to the bridge, as shown on this sheet. And that'll just continue on perpetually.
Okay. Okay, other comments, questions?
I have one question concerning the actual motion because there's a more streamlined version in draft motions and then there's a large.
No, the draft motion is what Gary put in there. The resolution in a draft motion is the attorney's one. That's what the attorney wants.
Under action needed, I just, that was the action that was needed.
Okay, no problem, okay. Resolve that the first selectment is authorized in the name of and on behalf of, of the town to execute and deliver a document entitled Subordination Agreement pertaining to a conservation easement in favor of the Town of Eastline over land now owned by Deerfield 95 Investor Associates, LLC, to be used in connection with the Connecticut Department of Transportation I-95 interchange improvements, dated at Eastline on this second day of November, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, any comments, further ones? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. Thank you, Gary, thank you for a very clear and succinct report too on exactly what's being done too, so. The state, it's funny, I'll bring up the other. They came up with, we need a second easement too, they told us, up there, Sound Cove. And so we looked around and Gary had our intern do some research. They wanted an easement on something that we didn't have any ownership or easement of, so. You know, Ed said, you know, Ed O'Connell said, geez, the state usually had better title searches than this. So fortunately, we didn't, it became, we took that off the, obviously took it off the.
Next, the next item is a mute point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary.
Thanks, thank you.
Moving on to old business, we've gotten our second, our, our second donation, not donation, but our second disbursement from the NIP fund. And it was thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars, or something like that. Which we really thought would be a lot bigger than that because for the October to March timeframe was twelve thousand, four hundred. So we were kind of hoping for more than that. But now we have ample because the quote that Justin had gotten a while back was thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-six, fifty, so we wanted to wait till we got the second one. This actually, they said it works out better because it allows them to get it and, you know, get them installed and so forth before the spring comes. So I didn't ask Justin or Joe Vergara to be here, we've just gone through this several times and seen that. So if there's any questions, I, the quote from Big Belly is right there with all the documentation and so forth like that. And we do have, you know, where they're thinking of putting them. Right now, the, the plan is to put them in front of the movie theater and down by.
The new park?
No, not the new park. Yeah, just down the street, Black Sheep. And one of the other areas they're talking about, maybe in the spring, if we're going to get another one if these work out, is up by Dairy Queen because during the summer, they now have three garbage containers across there to catch the refuse. It'd be better if you have one of these in, so. But here again, we're going to see how they work out first. So, so, any further concerns or questions?
I missed a meeting last week because I was in Charleston, or last month because I was in Charleston, and they have them all over the place in Charleston.
Okay, yeah.
Before I turned, all the public spaces, they were, they were very broken.
Yeah, that's good to hear too, so. Okay, if it's done, we take a motion?
Sure. Move to approve the expenditure of thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents from account thirty-two dash thirty dash four hundred dash seven hundred dash seven-two-seven, parentheses, NIP's grant expenditures for the purchase of two HC5 slash SC5.5 double-station garbage recycle containers, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan, further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to update.
Kevin, how often are we supposed to get these dispersments?
Twice a year. We're going to get them right in the early April, late October timeframe. So I would, I would think the amount we got, we're probably looking around twelve thousand, thirteen thousand dollars. And it's very specific of what, it has to be used for something that's involved in, involved in, you know, environmental cleanup and stuff like that too. I think right now, we're looking at receptacles because in the summer, we do get a lot of complaints of overflowing garbage. And then the birds visit, other, other creatures visit. So those are one of the things too. But we are looking at possibly, as we move on, you can get side roads, you know, sweepers because the NIPS are on the side of the corners, or on the sides of the road. So there's some specificity in what you can use it for. So one of those is hire a, sort of like a refuse coordinator. We didn't want to do that. Figure we can handle that ourselves, so. Okay, moving on, charter revision update. Last night, they held a public hearing at the middle school and there was about five members of the public that got up and spoke. Aunt Chikala was there with me to hear the people voice their comments. The one that came up to add to what's already been on there was to look at establishment of a, a town manager position vice having, making that sort of the CEO of the town. So a couple of people spoke on that. And then there was some, a few members of the zoning commission there that spoke against merging the planning and zoning commissions. So that was it. And then after that, they decided they're going to form three subcommittees. One is on commissions, one is on finance, and I forget what the third one was. But they're going to meet twice a month, basically the first and third Tuesday of the month. The first meeting of the month will be a, a, a regular meeting. The third meeting will be, or the second meeting in the month will be, they'll have a quick opening of the meeting, take any public comment, and then adjourn, and then break off into the subcommittees. Realizing that, of course, they have to submit agendas for subcommittees and so forth and take minutes. And, and that, so they, they seem to have a very good idea of the work involved and they're, they're ready to get moving on it, so.
Will their meetings be held here at Town Hall?
Most will, yes, whenever, the plan is right in this room for most of the meetings.
And will any of them be taped, broadcast?
We can see, I can work with Mark Salerno on getting that done. I would think, especially as they get going, they probably need to start doing that. The, the subcommittees would be hard to do because they're going to have to break into smaller rooms and, you know, to have. rooms and, you know, to record those would be impossible unless someone wants to use their cellphone.
Well, I'm sorry that I was not able to attend last night, but I did talk with a couple of people who were there. And a statement was made that the reason this was put on the charter revision list for planning and zoning to be combined was because that was what I was in favor of. And that is not true. I did not ask to have that put on the list. It was already on the list when we received it, and that was not my request.
No, the only one that you requested was the last one we added.
Yes.
I think they were confusing the two.
I think, I would think that was probably what was this because that was what it was, that the last one was your request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, Exa-Fisher reports. We'll start with Rosanna, work our way down.
Okay, I did attend the Board of Ed meeting, the last meeting, and it was pretty much a continuation of the previous meeting, which I had reported on. I, let's see, zoning tomorrow night is canceled. This is the third meeting in a row that's been canceled because of withdrawal of applications. And it was one, oh, the Historic Cemetery Association will be meeting on Friday. And I think that if we do have some additional funds coming in, they have very little money to do any kind of repairs or operation. They're spending almost all of their budgeted money on mowing and taking care of debris that's come down. And so perhaps when we get another round of rescue funds, perhaps we could consider helping them a little bit, as well as a couple of our other historic properties, the Smith-Harris House or Brookside Farm. The Outback Building is really getting, the house is getting into be tough shape with the outside pan, what do I want to say, the outside, not paneling, but you know what I mean.
Siding.
Siding, thank you. So perhaps those are some things that we might put on the list to consider with our next round of rescue funds. I think they would be eligible.
We aren't, we, they have, we, all the money we have is pretty much allocated except for the emergency. So, and for Smith-Harris House and Sammy Smith House, we already do the mowing for them. They don't.
No, no, it's the Historic Cemetery Association.
Oh, the cemeteries, I thought you said the historical houses. Okay. Okay. Matt?
Yes, so I attended the Brookside Farm meeting, an ex officio for that. And the, yeah, the outside siding is a huge concern, and they're not quite sure how they approach it and how they get that repaired and taken care of. It's going to be quite expensive, so there's sort of an inquiry there on how that might be accomplished. Usually this time of year, in the end of November, they outfit themselves Christmas trees adjacent to the Brookside Farm House, and they will be back this year. And one of the things they talked about was maybe doing a couple of weekends, do like a hot chocolate thing in the barn, make a little bit extra money for Brookside Farm, make it a little bit more of an experience for people going with their kids to buy a tree. And that's about it for now, for them.
Okay. That's it?
That's it for me.
And, and if you want, you want to cover CCM as well?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. And yesterday, Ann attended CCM because I had, one of us had to be at the Millstone Drill, so that was me, so.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, on October 20th, I went to the Town Building Committee meeting, just, it was by Zoom. The final invoice for the elementary school project was approved, a thousand, about $1,700 for ONG. And the Town Building Committee voted to recommend to the Board of Education to close out the project completely. So that's a nice final step.
Did I forward your letter from Jeff saying he would do that?
Yeah. I haven't seen that one yet, I haven't seen that follow-up between Rocky and Jeff. But yeah, that was, the committee asked Rocky to then communicate with Jeff.
And Jeff has.
Right, yes.
He did send it a letter, I thought I forwarded it to you.
Okay, yeah, I haven't seen it, but I'll, yeah, I can take a look again. No real discussion on public safety building, except that there's no bills at this, at the time of the meeting, and there were no bills at the time of the meeting, but there's just two relatively small outstanding invoices. And once those are paid, that project can also be closed out. So we are, you know, I think that was sort of a good, you know, good developments for sure. And then yesterday, yes, I did attend Connecticut Conference of Municipalities yearly convention, and it's held at the Mohegan Sun, so makes it quite easy for towns pretty local. And so there are a number of events that happened, but the sort of guts of it also is to attend these seminars on various topics. And there's, there are like three separate workshops during the day. Each one is one hour long with question and answer. And the workshops, you get to choose, so there's usually four or five topics. And I went to, the first one in the morning was on Freedom Information Act updates, in particular on hybrid meetings. So that was very interesting, and I think it'll serve us well as we maybe revise our bylaws, whatever. And, because that was one reason why we hesitated there. And second one, second in the afternoon, I attended an energy, green energy seminar on EV chargers. And, and I also spoke to some, there's also a whole, a number of vendors at this event too. So I happened to talk to the vendor who ended up having to be part of this presentation, so it worked out well. Lots of information there, which I'll share at a different time when we're, when we're, you know, speaking on the topic and discussing that. Third seminar was on labor issues, in particular arbitration decisions by the State Board. And a really good summary was given, it was a little tedious, but a good summary was given of a number of the major decisions that have come down in the last year in arbitration. So I have, and I have those materials. So there's both like slide presentation plus materials, and for your own use, or board member use too, if you go to the CCM website after, sometime after this event happens, they will post, sometimes they'll show you the video, but videos of these seminars, but they will also, also post the seminars. So if there's a topic, and there were many other topics to go to, there was one on the infrastructure bill, but you can't be two places at once, so. But that was good. And, yeah, and otherwise, you know, very helpful, it's a very helpful event every year. So, but that's that. And Kevin, you're going to cover water and sewer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have some too, in case, yeah. That is it, thanks.
Okay. Ann?
Yeah, excuse me, I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Bill?
No, I covered the building for me and planning, speak after next.
Okay. Okay. Just for me, some really good news. There's a, there's, has been in the past, a municipal revenue sharing account where we're, state's supposed to share some revenue with us. Well, it hasn't happened until, since 2017. So we had a nice addition to our, an unanticipated addition to our revenue source within the last couple of days. Our finance director let me know we are getting $368,600 that we were not anticipating in revenue for the year. So thank you, Kevin. I know you probably made a phone call to make it happen. And why don't you, one other item, why don't you come up to the thing and tell, because, you know, we talked about moving money into a, to get a little bit more revenue and interest, where we're, what our plan, what our, what we budgeted for the year and where we are right now.
So just one last thing about the municipal revenue sharing account. What it is, is a portion of the sales tax revenue that the state of Connecticut takes in. They're supposed to allocate a certain percentage of that to four different grant programs for municipalities, and they've, they haven't done that in the last four budget cycles, so. CCM actually recommended for municipalities not to budget for this, and then the state of Connecticut kind of sprung this on us, so it was a good surprise, 368,000. The other chunk of revenue that is unanticipated is interest on our investments. We budgeted, I think it's either, I think it's $20,000, it's either 20 or 40,000, but we've already exceeded that. And right now, you know, the Fed just increased interest rates 75 basis points again. So when we collect money in January, we're going to collect about 30, 35 million dollars of tax revenue. That money's going to sit in the account, and then it slowly gets dwindled down, you know, drawn down to June. But, you know, January, we'll have 35 million there, maybe we'll have 25 million in February. At three and a half or 4% interest is almost $80,000 a month. So we're really going to, the interest is going to go sky high in the first of the year.
One of the things Scott Frager last week too, he showed me, if you remember, Kevin pointed out that our investing with certain banks, it's not all in one account, it's all in separate accounts, so it doesn't exceed that 250,000. And I got to see all the accounts where it showed that they're all under, there's a lot of pages, and they're all under 250,000, so it's exactly as you had portrayed it. And here again, this is, this is not, you know, a bond or a stock market, this is.
Yeah, it's fully liquid, fully secured. And the nice part about it is, and I'm really surprised more, more banks don't offer this, but it's a fully insured product. So, you know, banks FDIC insurance is 250,000. So as long as they keep, so we have our money sitting in Newtown, Newtown Savings Bank is one of our investment vehicles. So say it's 5 million dollars that's there, I don't know the exact dollar amount. They take the 5 million and dole out to banks throughout the nation, 248,000 and change. And they sit on that all month, you know, sweeps back and forth every night, they do some crazy, you know, banking things, but we collect the interest on that. So, you know, our money's in 30 or 40 different banks, whatever it is. So it's all insured, so if something ever happens, every penny of it is FDIC insured. So, and that's, some of the other banks don't offer that, that product, so it was really important to put the town's money in a.
Any questions for Kevin while he's up there? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Yep, and I will have, so next week at the Board of Finance, I'm going to have more of a detailed interest income breakdown and projection through the year, so I'll share that next Board of Selectment meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Millstone Drill yesterday, that was their, their annual graded drill. It started out as, it starts out as a release of steam, and then there's some, you know, there's some radioactivity in it, so forth like that. So it went really well. Chief Finkelstein is the EMD, he could not be there, as I explained to everyone before. He has a new addition to his family, so that was, thanks for his presence. Julie Wilson did an extremely good job. Paulie Infrem is the, is the assistant EMD, and it went really. One of the things they throw, they always throw a monkey wrench in there, and ours was on the Rocky Net Connector, just as the, it bends around to get onto 95 Southbound, a cement truck overturned, and there was four inches of cement in the ground, so, or not in the ground, but on the surface. And, you know, they quickly thought that, wait a minute, in a situation like this, the state's supposed to clean it up, but with considerations going on, we have our public works garage right there, so boom, we'd get them up there and clean it up that much quicker. So all things, I think it went well, we didn't, we will know what our score was later on. Moving on, our IT Director, Dan Clary, and HR Director Sandy Spencer are here, both doing a really good job, they're enjoying their work. Charter revision, we've always talked about, already talked about that. The Route 161, I know several of us were at that last week. A very good presentation by Joe Reimler, I always mess up his name, I think that's right, with that company. He really went into details about what they're looking at, you know, they look at the cycles of the traffic lights, accident rate, the types of accidents, head-on, angles, side swipes, rear end. Very thorough and lots of states, and they are looking for input from people because they want input before they come out with their plan. This is in addition to the Exit 74 161 renovation. That is, that has gone out to bid right now. We did ask, right now, that they include sidewalks along the east side of, if they still could go back and take a look, east side of 161, which would be sort of on the northbound side to the east there, because right now, you'd have to, like, in front of Burger King and places like that, you'd be walking in grass, so we're hoping that they'll take that into consideration. Gary, you, Gary and Alex, the town engineer, were talking to me about this, we talked about that.
So the largest stretch is really around Latimer Brook Commons. They put a pedestrian pad in the ground, they redid the lights, but the plans left out sidewalk along this strip, so it just seems like it's a small stretch.
That's.
Sidewalk, that probably, maybe, I don't know if it was an oversight, so we contacted the COG and DOT, and hopefully they can adjust their bid package and include it.
Yeah. The state wants us to go through the COG, so we did that. Jim Butler, who is retired as a director, but is, is on as a, basically a consultant, and that's one of his strikes. Actually, he had, one time, he was a planner here.
Yes, he was actually the first planner, I think, in East Line. The other was at the, at Industrial Park Drive, there where the sidewalks will end. Town engineer had recommend if we can get the state to put in a crosswalk that's timed in with the light, that would be the bigger expense as it composed to the Latimer Brook sidewalk. So hopefully, we can get both of those things in, and that would really improve the entire pedestrian corridor.
Okay. Mentioned the police station. I've talked with the chief, and we're hoping that probably early after the holidays, do an, finally do an open house at the police station. It's basically, we want to, you know, it's almost been a year, they've moved in, they've settled in. Everything is working because, you know, one of the things you want to be sure of. So we're going to look at it probably, you know, sometime after the first of the year, do an open house there. The boys' country club, a country club, cross-country team. Okay. It's been a really long day, okay? Our boys' country, cross-country team are the, they're division double M state champs this year, and the girls, girls finished in third, so congratulations to both of them. And I just tried to find out, the boys' soccer team is playing in the finals, the ECC finals right now, there's, it just started at seven, so we don't know the outcome of that, so, on that good stuff too. Regarding our water and sewer, we did enact, had a public hearing, there was no one to make comments, for rate increases for water and sewer this year, they're both going up 8%. And that's a little bit higher than normal, but here again, costs have gone up, our chemical costs to treat the water have gone up, obviously sewage treatment costs are affected too. So Joe said our numbers from, he likes to do an, Joe Bogart likes to do an analysis of the numbers, and they were a little better than he thought, but not to the point where we wanted to adjust the 8% because he feels right now, he'd like to make sure he has the resources there for chemicals and so forth like that. The meter replacement program is going well, it's over 50% now. He's hoping to be done in a little over a year, then look at some other things in that area too. And that is another issue, they want to extend pipes to well 2 because that's not operating in a very high capacity right now. It'll cost about 1.3 million. Now, they'll bond for that, but right now, they want to obligate about $500,000 so they could at least order the supplies. The supplies won't probably come in until, for several months, but you can't order them unless you have cash on it too. And they have the funds in the sewer assessment funds to transfer the 500,000, or have, you know, to obligate the funding. And we wanted to be sure. It's been through town attorney, he says we can do something like that, because the bonding will be done through the town, because the Water and Sewer Commission can't bond, and, you know, we bond projects, we get through us. But before we actually do that, we're going to get a sign-off on the auditors as well to make sure that something like that. Here again, that's water and sewer, they don't really need our approval, but we figured that we wanted, they're going to eventually be bonding that, which will come through the town, so we want to make sure this is as transparent as possible and stun is open and, you know, make sure we have everybody that needs to say it's okay to do before we do it. I think that's it. Okay.
I have a couple of things.
Yes, ma'am.
I think up until two years ago, there was a program with the state to provide funds, if applied for, to increase police patrols for alcohol and drug use.
Oh, you had the DWI grants, and we have applied for that.
Okay, because they had discontinued them for two years. Now they're available again?
They've applied for it. So, yes, that is available, because I just signed off on that maybe a week or two ago, and probably longer than that, but.
Well, I think it was two years ago they decided to eliminate it. I read the police logs every day, and I think that it's warranted. And secondly, I would like to have added to a future agenda, a review of the ethics policy for the town. And when that policy was adopted.
And when that policy was adopted, sister policy was supposed to also be enacted by the Board of Education. And I don't believe that that ever happened. I think the ball was dropped. But at least I would, I would like to have us review the policy.
Okay.
Okay. Just a question there, Roseanne, do you mean the ethics ordinance, or do we have a separate policy in addition to the ethics ordinance?
I think they're one and the same.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah, double check this.
I, I think it's a policy, I don't think it's an ordinance.
I think it's, I just recall that the ordinance was attached to the purchasing policy, you know, and so I think that does exist, but there might be a separate.
Yes.
Thing, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Anything else, any comments? Okay, communications, none? Public comment, Gary or Kevin? Okay, so we don't have a selectment's response? So we have an executive session, if you'd like to.
Sure.
That, and this will allow everybody else to go home.
Okay, so we'll move into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters. Eastline Land Trust, Asagachi Hills. The board is entering into executive session at seven fifty-one PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? During executive session, we'll take a few minutes just to get everything shut off.
We will. The, the board has returned from executive session at eight twenty-six PM, and no formal votes were taken.
Okay. Is there, next answer, a motion to adjourn?
Yes, move to adjourn, the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2022, at eight twenty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Have a great evening.
Okay.